Okay, we're speaking this morning with Nicholas Graham running for school board. We try to make this just sort of casual. You've probably been to some of the more, let's not say stuffy, let's say stated candidate things where you're given a question, you have so many minutes to answer. We just really like to have, to stay away from that as much as we can. First off, if you don't mind, could we just ask you, tell us what you do for a living and why you want to be a school board member?
First off, just want to say happy to be here. Thank you for having me. Currently, I'm an IT consultant. Been doing that for about three years. And previous, I was an IT specialist with the St. John's County School District for seven years and also worked as a teacher's aide for one year. So I have some background with the school district there. And once again, it's good to be here.
And why do you want to be on school?
I have a passion for, just for kids and education and I've, just from working there, I've gotten really involved with the teachers and the parents. And everything is going towards digital curriculum, IT-based. And I think we need a diverse board, you know, with age and with experience. And we have, we have a good diverse board already. And I think that we can, I can help make it better and continue on into this new age we're going into.
So you saw some things while you were at the school district that you thought now not working there you can maybe help with?
Absolutely. Yeah, a lot of, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of things with cost and money and with our IT department especially, there's, there's some money that gets spent. You know, things get, teachers see the latest and greatest, you know, item, whether it be like a smart board or whatever it might be. And we just go full throttle onto that. I think we can, we can take things that really benefit the children. And we need to just, you know, have more pilot programs and, and set up, set up a good, you know, good system where we actually test out all these programs and various hardware and all programs throughout all departments.
Okay. On a bigger scale, outside, excuse me, outside the IT, thing that interests me is that I want to talk to all the school board members about is, St. John's County clearly has the number one district in the state, I think five years running. Is it difficult to find things that you want to say are wrong, wrong enough with the system that you, that you need to be in there?
No, I mean, it's, we are number one and it's great. But I've always looked at things like you can, like a piece of Swiss cheese, there's always little holes you can fill. And we can always get better. I mean, that's, that's what it's all about is just becoming stronger and better. And it is, it does speak for itself that we are number one and we are on the right track. We just need to make sure that we maintain that track.
You talked about the holes in Swiss cheese. Do you have any holes that you want to talk about? I mean specifically what you, where we're lacking and where you think we should be doing something differently?
Well, I mean, everything is going toward, like I said, everything's going IT-based, whether it's with busing services, you know, food services, everything is, that plays a big role. And I bring that up a lot because I do think it's important. I mean, everything is, we're speaking, you know, in front of the camera and we're using technology right now. Everything is integrated that way. On our board, we have a lawyer, we have people that have different backgrounds, educators. And it's good, just like I said, to have that diverse board. And there are, there are, there are a lot of things that, you know, I don't, I don't want to speak specifically on what the holes are because I'm not into that. I'm not in there, you know, I'm not, I don't work for the school system right now. And I don't want to speak and criticize something that I might not be correct on. But I know that there are, there are, there are always things that we can do better. And that's what I want to help with.
Okay. Let me ask you something, and I think we'll ask everybody too. Is a school board job a full-time job or is it a part-time job?
I believe it's a full-time job. You need to get out there and, and, you know, obviously you have your, your two workshop meetings a month and you have your school board meeting a month that you, that you have to attend. And outside of that, it's up to you, you know, what you want to do. And I think it's very important to get out into the community, listen to the parents, go to the schools, go to the school functions, just get involved. And that's one thing that I feel that I'm very good at is listening to people and just not talking so much, you know? It's good to hear what people think and really take it in and interpret it and apply that and pass along the message to the right people in the right departments.
Can you do this full-time? I mean, are you planning on not, not, not carrying on your career? I mean, is it, are you trading one for the other?
Well, what I do is, I actually have somebody that I, that subcontract's work, that I, I send out, you know, jobs to. And so I, I was, it's very flexible. I'm very flexible. I can, you know, I'm not going to say I'm going to completely stop doing what I'm doing, but I'm going to scale it back. And this is going to be my number one priority, you know? And I'm going to get out there and get this, get this done and get out in the community. This is going to be my priority.
If you were elected, how would you spend the first 30 or 60 days? How much time and where would you go first?
My first 30, 60 days, you know, I'm not going to come in there like I know it all or like a bull, you know? Because the truth is, I don't. And I'm going to go in there humbly and just listen and figure out where my role is on the board. And I think that's very important. You don't just go in somewhere and say, you know what, I know what's best. And you have people that have been there for 12 years that are on the board. You know, it's good to just sit, to kind of take yourself back and listen to people and focus on what is actually going on until you can grasp it and then go from there. So you'll be more successful and you'll use your time more efficiently that way.
What about Dr. Joyner? Do you have a professional relationship? Do you talk to him now?
I do, yeah. He's a, he's a great guy. I think he's done a really good job with his school system. You know, I mean, he's just, he's a nice guy. I feel like he, he's coming from the heart and he really cares about our students and teachers and staff. And I stand behind him.
Where are you at on charter schools and vouchers in public schools?
Charter schools, I'm not going to say that it's, it's the greatest thing ever. But I think, you know, what's, what's important is that we have certain standards. Because what I hate to see is we get these charter schools going and then they close, they fail. And they're not really on the right track with where the school district is. We've had some schools that have, that y'all probably know of that have closed down. I don't know all the names of them. But I don't think it's really a good option for this county. Maybe for other counties, it's okay. But I think if somebody wants to open a school, you know, go ahead and open a private school.
Do you think that public, that public money should be spent on these private schools? I mean, that's, that's sort of the basic.
That's pretty much where it is. For this county, no. I think we're doing what we're doing is right. And I don't see why somebody would want to put their kid in a charter school when they can, when we have great schools already. You know, unless there's a special needs school, that's, that's different, you know? You know, I really, I think that we do facilitate our special needs kids very well in the school district. But there might be a charter school that could cater to them more so than we do. And I'm open to that, you know?
When you talk to parents that have moved their kids to a charter school, what's the reason they tell you why they did it? Do they tell you, they give you?
They tell me more, it's more family-oriented, community. And that's why I always talk about having small schools. I mean, that's very important to me. And I think we can, we can accomplish that with our public schools. When I worked at Bartrae High School, it exceeded to about 3,000 students. And you can start to see, it's kind of starting to, it's getting a little too big, you know? It's kind of losing that community touch. And I think you got to keep schools under a certain number. But I, I talked to a parent that did put their kid through a charter school and they're all happy and excited about it. And then come a year later, they're actually asking if I would sit on their board. And come a year later, they're saying, oh, well, it didn't work out because of organization problems, because of this, because of that. They don't talk to the school system and it's, it's just very, if, unless somebody comes up with a great approach to charter schools, then I don't think it's for our county. You know, I mean, if somebody comes in, they have a bunch of money and they have, they have everything, all the right steps, then I think it's good. But it's not, like I said, it's not for our county.
And I think the main issue is they're not coming in with a lot of money. They're, they're not coming asking for state tuition, but there's actually state money for public schools being spent on building some of these charter schools now too. And I think it's, I don't understand it myself, but.
Yeah.
I mean, you're a product of the St. John's County School District, so you've got a good education.
Right, yeah.
Not like.
Yeah, I feel, when I was, I graduated high school at 18 and then started working for the school district when I was 19. And I worked there for seven years. So I really just stayed in that system and I saw both sides of it as a student and as an employee. I worked at elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, you know, worked as a teacher's aide. I started out as extended day aide and then worked as a computer lab assistant at Joanna Creek Elementary. And then from there, worked at Hickory Creek Elementary as a school tech. And then went to Bartrae High School and worked for the county as a regional tech after that. So I had all the schools in the north part of the county that I covered for IT. So I'm very familiar with the principals, with the teachers, the staff, a lot of the students, parents. And that's, that's what I'm coming with. I mean, I, I know the people, I know the folks. It's like, it's a big family, you know? And that's how we got to keep it.
Did you have questions? No, you got us to.
Just keep going.
I suppose that most people, or at least most people that I talk to in the public school system are looking at the challenges that we have. And again, we just talked about how, how well we do on test scores and everything. But I mean, the challenge, I, I think you'd agree, is, is the growth. I mean, we have Duval County announce last week that their student enrollment for the next school year has actually gone down.
Yeah. A lot of them are moving over to St. John's County.
It was, it was interesting that they, that the news said they were going to have a, do a big study on why, why the population of Duval School was going down. They were going to spend two months, I think $20,000. And I think we all pretty much know.
Yeah.
Because they're coming here.
It's a waste of money, yeah.
But, but, I mean, do you see, you mentioned that you want to see a lot, a lot smaller schools. But then the biggest challenge financially we have is getting the money from, from state, from appropriations and they, to build the schools that we need to keep up with growth. Do you have any other?
Well, that's where the.
Ideas about growth?
Yeah, that's where the K-8 schools come into place. I mean, because it's kind of like two little small schools and one. And I think you get the best of both because you do save money that way and you still keep the school small.
What do you think the role is of a school board member lobbying the state for money? I mean, do you think it's part of your job to get on the bus and go to Tallahassee?
Um, I think there's, yeah, there's, there's going to be, you know, some of that. And I know the way that it's, it's, that we do it now is that Ms. Slough, she goes out and she speaks on all the school members' behalfs. I think that, you know, having one person go out there and speaking, you know, saying, okay, I can tell, you know, Bev, hey Bev, this is what, this is my two cents. Can you make sure that this is said to them? And she knows the people there. And it's, instead of having five, you know, all of us go there, it's working more efficient that way to just have, you know, one, one person designated from the board to go and, and advocate to the state. And I think, and a lot of times if, if we have something that is very important, the superintendent will get out there and he'll get the community going and the parents will get going. And I think that's what it takes. It just takes, you know, a mass amount of people, you know, as opposed to just one person. You get out there and you get everybody calling and everybody mailing in, there are senators and it's, that's, that's what it takes.
Nicholas, what do you think are the top two to three challenges for the district? And what, do you have any plans that you'd like to share on, on addressing these challenges?
Well, I think we already mentioned one was the, you know, just the growth and maintaining our school system at the level that we're at. I mean, I think that's, that's key. And we have to work closely with our operations department on that and closely with our, mostly our operations department makes sure that we get these schools open and that we hire the right principals. I mean, you don't want to see, I know working at schools, luckily for the most part in, in St. John's County, our principals are very, they treat the teachers and staff like professionals, like they should be treated and not micromanage them. That's one thing that I really don't like. You know, you go to school for, you get an education and you're a teacher and you're hired as a professional. I think that we need to respect that and not stay on their case. Because that just makes, that's just another stressful, that makes it even more stressful to that teacher. We need to be accommodating to the teachers so that they can be accommodating to our students because that's what it's all about.
Okay. I'm going to segue from there and put you on the spot now. I know that you, I believe you, you guys have spoken to the St. John's County Teachers' Union. I think they've spoken to you about the, the, I don't know whether it's letting go or firing or non-renewing or however, whoever wants to put into the 55.
Right, the teachers that went in.
Along the last day.
Yeah, I was there, the school board meeting, yeah.
And the blindsided. And I'm not saying that's, that's the two sides of it. But you mentioned, because you mentioned specifically principals and Dr. Joyner mentioned specifically that he, the way he runs his system is he believes in his principals and he lets them.
Right.
It's their responsibility to hire and fire. It's not a, not a, a district-wide sort of distribution system.
And I agree with that.
Do you, do you agree with the principal then? Do you agree with the way the teachers were treated on?
Um, I don't know the specific, you know, everything, all the details and specific of it, but it's, it's, um, I, you know, if that's, if that's the case where they just said, you know, I don't like you or, I don't know exactly what was said, but.
None of it's.
Just for one reason, like, you know, you're a highly effective teacher, but I don't want you here. I mean, I don't think that's fair. I think that if that is the case, which I don't know for a fact, but if it is the case, then we need to have a, a system in place where we place that teacher into another school. You know, and there's, there's a couple of things that I, that I disagree with. When it comes to a lot of the teachers, they just get, if they're not tenured, they'll just get let go and told, oh, just reapply. I think that's a waste of time. If they're a good teacher, it's a waste of time to just say, oh, let's let them go and reapply because it's wasting resources on our human resource department. And I mean, I've, I've worked, I know that it's not always the case, but, you know, working with the school system, I've seen where teachers don't start till two weeks after the school year. And that's not fair to that teacher because the students are already there and they're getting off to a bad start really by starting late. And it's not their fault. And it's, and it's not the district's fault that they just can't hire all these teachers because there's such an influx of teachers. If we can just place those teachers that are good in other schools or wherever or however, so they have a job and they're not worried the whole summer, how am I going to pay my bills? And we're not worried about how are we going to hire all these people at one time? It just makes sense. I mean, that's just, to me, that's just common sense. So I think we can, we can improve some things in that area.
And if I, and I could be mistaken, because I understand these teachers who, who were not rehired are sort of thrown back into the mix with all the new teachers and that everybody starts from scratch. And again, maybe that's what you're speaking of about wasting the time when we have.
Yeah.
Apparently these, these teachers are not at this point, and it, I suppose it could change because I believe Dr. Joyner's looking at it. But they weren't reassigned to other schools either and.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't sound fair. I don't know if that's the case though. But I mean, what we need to make sure is that, you know, there's a lot of, a teacher shouldn't have to feel, well, I need to make sure that my principal knows, likes me and I, maybe I need to go talk to him or maybe I need to go do this. It should not be that way. It should be the principal going into the classroom, just the principal going to the classroom, knowing that teacher. They shouldn't have to feel like obligated, like, oh, I have to kiss up or do this or do that. And I don't think that's the case in our county. But if that is, you know, then we need to make sure that we, you know, we improve that. Because it, it needs to be a fair system. If we have good, I mean, that's not, if, if that's, that's the case, we have good teachers and they're not reappointed, I mean, we need, we need to work on that. Maybe there is, there is one of the pieces of hole, there's a, you know, hole in the Swiss cheese.
There's all these issues.
Yeah.
Let me throw out another one, just kind of out of left field.
Okay.
Some states have adopted year-round schools. What do you think about year-round schools?
I, I disagree with year-round schools. I mean, I think, my mom is a teacher. She's a teacher at Joanna Creek Elementary since 1997. And growing up as a kid, I mean, it was great having our mom, you know, during the summer. And it's good to have that break. I think teachers, they just need to get that, they need to refuel and get that energy back. Because it does take a lot out on them. It is a lot of work, you know? When you have 18 students and, or if you're a high school teacher and you have classes, you know, 20, 25 students every hour, I mean, you just, you, you need that. And it's, and it, you see it, it's, it's for the, the better of our teachers and staff. And it's good for our schools. We can close them down, we can, you know, take all the maintenance issues into place and repaint, you know, do the floors and I think it's very important. It's kind of, when you come, when students start at the end of August, they come back to a fresh new school and it's a, it's a new start and it's a great thing. I think we need to keep it that way.
Good point. You mentioned, and I hadn't thought of this, but you mentioned with your 18 students and all that. I know that the school, the school system is really interested, would really like the legislature to get the class size amendment bumped up a little bit where, where they can put a few more students in because they say it's a, it's a big waste of money and a terrible expense in the schools, at least from the schools side of it. Do you have, have any particular thoughts on class size?
I know that, you know, a lot of teachers, they want the class size down. I think that if we want to add more students, we need to make, you know, some of the classrooms need to be bigger, first of all. Physical space needs to be bigger. Because you go in some of these rooms and you can't even walk around and you have, you know, teachers trying, you know, teachers are being creative and they're trying to do lesson plans and this and that. And there's paper and backpacks and everything all around. We actually need more physical space. And also, I think it's important to have teacher aides that help and not, not pair of, you know, the, the, um, associate teachers are just, you know, I don't, I don't really totally agree with associate teachers and how they get paid. Because I think it's, it's kind of the wrong, if you're trying to be a teacher, it's the wrong path. Like it's, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but the, if you, if you need a job, you know, of course it's good to have that paycheck. But I think that we can, we should be able to pay our teachers more and just, just, just have teachers, have teachers and have teacher aides, you know? You don't go to school to become a teacher, to be a teacher's aide, which is basically what an associate teacher really is, in my opinion.
So in a perfect world, what's, what's a good class size? So for second, third grade?
Um, I would say, I mean, I think it is a good number at 18, 19. But I mean, if my mom would probably, she's, she's going to watch this, I'm sure. She might disagree. If I go a little bit more than, you know?
She might watch it twice.
If you push the number up a little bit, you know? It does get, it, those two or three students do make a big difference. So ideally, I say it's good to have that 18, 19 mark. And just, just keep it at that. But I mean, if it comes down to it, to making sure our system runs good, then, you know, if that's the case, then maybe a couple more at the most. But I like, you know, I think we need to keep it right where it's at.
Here's a, here's a what-if thing. Funding has been tough, the legislative league for the schools. And other schools in other areas, I'm not saying this is going to happen this year, but other schools in other areas have been forced to take cuts, to make cuts in their, in their, in their operating budget. It's not, not by maintenance or anything, but they've, in other words, you've seen some that have cut band and some that have cut art and some that have cut. If you were in the position where, where the board said, we have to cut something from the schools, and I know, I know that's not a fulminant answer, but, but would it be teachers? Would it be?
Or where would you cut first?
Sports? Would it be art? Would it be music?
Well, I mean, it depends on how much money is in those areas. I mean, honestly, from when I went to school, the kind of classes I liked were the art classes and, you know, the PE classes. And that got me through my day. Like I like, that's what I looked forward to, to going to, you know? It wasn't so much doing the math classes and all. I did that and went through it and did the tests and did well at it. But I, you know, I don't want to see us lose touch with, with that. I mean, I think the bands are so cool. It's so awesome to go hear kids play in a band or watch a football game or, you know, all the sports. And I think that, that keeps our community together and that's what our schools thrive on. You know, it's kind of like without that, it's just like.
Work.
Yeah. It's a good point. But you got to have fun, you know? I mean, you guys come to work and you do, I'm sure there's fun times y'all have and, you know?
We don't have band here.
We don't have band. You know, you could maybe play a little music, you know? But I think these, I mean, I see these kids that are in ROTC and everything and that's really what, they, you know, they have fun or they play football. That's a good, that's, it builds their confidence, you know? I, I mean, I think that if we lose touch with that, then.
Well, teaches team and other disciplines too.
Absolutely.
So you went, what would you cut first if you had to? If we like put the screws to you and said, Nicholas, what would you cut if you had to cut $100,000 from bar control?
It would have to just, we'd have to really look at the numbers and I'm just guessing here, you know? But I mean, we would, it's hard to say what exactly we would cut. I mean, you'd have to just, if I say one thing, it's, you know, cut teachers, that's not a good thing. Um, I mean, you really have to lay it out. It really is a what-if question. And I, it's hard to say because I think it's running so good. And what we would cut, it would, it would hurt the students in one way, you know? I, I always try to avoid cutting arts, art programs and sports programs. I guess we would have, if we had to cut, you know, some programs, there, there are some, there are some classes you could look at and say, okay, if we're going to cut 100,000, you know, it would be, it's so hard to say. I don't, I don't know what to say to that. I honestly don't.
School board salaries. Okay, you don't have to say yes or no.
That's, I mean, it is a hard question that, to ask. I mean, if it's, if it's just, if I don't have the numbers in front of me, like what's being spent on what, we're kind of just guessing here. And I honestly don't want to speak and, and say something that would upset somebody else that, you know, when it's not really factual.
Well, let's shift over to the textbook debate that went on a little bit with the, the county, the districts controlling which textbooks are used and then the state wanting to jump into that. What's your feeling on that?
I'm all, I'm all about local control with our, with everything. I mean, we know what's best for our kids. And it's all community effort amongst the staff, students and teachers and, and I think that we need to decide, you know, what textbooks we are, we're bringing to our children. I mean, these kids come, they come to us, parents send their kids to us for eight hours a day. I mean, that's their, that's their child, you know? It's not like it's, you know, road construction or anything like that. It's their actual, it's a, a person. And we need to take care in that and make sure that what we are doing is correct. I mean, that's why I take things to heart. Like I, growing up in the school system and my mom being a teacher, my mom gets, I know the teachers, they get emotional about their kids and students and that's great. And we need to make sure that we don't become robots, you know? And just do what, oh, this is what the state says we're going to do. This is what they're, they say we're going to do. You know, what, what is that?
The flip side of that is, if you're looking at, you're talking about district control of, of the textbooks and school books.
Yes.
The flip side of that is that you can end up with 67 different sets of textbooks, with 67, not really 67 because a couple of the smaller counties have their districts together, but 60 different sets of school books.
Well, you know, everything.
60 different curriculums.
Yeah.
For kids that are competing for the same jobs and doing things. For kids that are competing for the same jobs and doing things. There, there's questions about, are, are the, are the counties in Miami and Hispanic counties gonna look at a different textbook than?
Well, I mean, well, I understand what you're saying, but if, you know, you, you go on to college, take a college class, taking a college class, you go and your, your text, your professor picks your textbooks out. You might take the same class but have a different textbook. And another thing, um, everything's going digital. We're all going to iPads and, you know, I know there's gonna be problems with that too. But we're going to, um, this digital textbooks, two thousand and fifteen. So that's gonna eliminate some cost. You know, I know that each class is gonna have a class set of books, which is good in case, you know, Johnny forgets his iPad or it's not charged or he dropped it or, you know, there's gonna be, I think when you, you get away from the old system of textbooks to a newer system, there's gonna be, of course, there's gonna be bad things and good things along with it.
Are we, don't we have like one of the classes this, this next coming year in St. John's County that's, that's gonna sort of be in the?
Yeah, one of the schools.
They're gonna try one of, yeah.
Yeah, they're doing, um.
For the eighth graders or the?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
So it's just, yeah, there's.
Yeah, pilot program, yeah, just to test it out. And I think that's very important. You don't just go into something and just say, here we go, you know? You kind of do the pilot program, you figure out the glitches and move along from there.
What about cursive writing? That's not gonna be taught anymore, is that true?
That's what I hear, um.
Did you say cursive or cursing?
Cursive.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I think, uh, you know, kids need to be, like y'all are doing, y'all are writing right now. You know, that's very important. I like, I bring my, you know, pad and paper, you know, it has to be a combination of paper and technology. I think it's good to have both. I mean, what if this thing dies or what if, what if, you know, the, the power goes out or, you know, what are we to do, you know?
Can't wifi.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna lose touch with the old way that we do things. And we need to have, you know, pen and paper and, um, you know, a lot of, what I do and, uh, for, for my business is I do point-of-sale systems. And when those computer systems go out, they are frantic and they'll even close their restaurant down. It's like, well, do you have a manual system? They're like, well, what do we do with that? And it's, they, they've almost lost touch with that. And it's like, you don't want to lose touch with this way, you know, by going to this. So.
That may be water under the bridge. I mean, it could, like, like four years ago when he was, I did, tried, got him a car and tried to get him to sign the title to it. And he didn't know how to sign his name.
Okay.
Four years.
That's, you know, I think we, we don't need to lose touch with that, that cursive, yeah.
We won't mention his name.
Okay, that's, alright.
Do y'all have other questions? I was in it with one, if, if you don't, you don't. What have we not asked you? What, because we, we may not, there may be some things that you wanna talk about that we didn't come up with. Is there anything that you want to? I mean, it's, this is not a summation or wrap-up. Kim, if you want to, is there anything that we should have asked you that you wanna talk about?
I think we really covered everything. Um, you know, we talked about like diverse, diversity on the board. And, um, you know, some people might say, oh, well, you know, I'm thirty, that, oh, but, you know, you're the youngest school board member. I think that's a good thing, like just having, I have a background as being a student in the school system. So, you know, we have, we have members on the board that are a parent's voice. Well, I can be the student's voice. I can be in the employee's voice, you know? And I've worked all the way from, you know, down at the school level to, you know, working with the custodians and picking up trash and helping them and, um, you know, working as a teacher's aide and working with the principals and work, you know, I just, I've, I, I like to observe and I've seen all this and I just really feel like I have a lot to offer to the school system by being on the school board.
All right, one final question. I'm sorry. Do you feel like your education here prepared you for the real world? Do you, have you left and come back? Have you always just stayed right here?
Um, I've, I've gone and I've been to, um, I've, I've done, I've, I've lived here, yeah, I've lived here my whole life, but I have kind of temporarily lived in, I lived in St. Thomas for a couple of months. You know, been up to New York for, I stayed up there for a couple of months just to kind of get a feel for what's out there. I like to travel. I think that's very important. I mean, I don't like to identify myself with, like, I'm a Floridian. It's kind of, it's, it's good to just look at yourself as you're a person on this earth, you know? And just to really get a good feel of the whole, the whole environment, everything, like all the different cultures. And I think that's important for students to know, you know, a lot of, a lot of kids, they don't ever, their parents don't take them places. And that's one thing I was talking about when you were talking about the, um, year-round schools and having the summers off. You know, that's something that I got to do a lot was go and travel. My dad had, we didn't have, you know, a lot of money growing up. I mean, we, we, he did alright, he did fine. We weren't rich, I mean, is what I'm trying to say. But he'd always get, he'd have these American Express points. We'd get, we'd go on these business, he'd go on, we'd go on these business trips and we'd go to different islands and different places and just go see different areas. And it was great just to get out there.
So it's educational, even though it wasn't school, it was like family vacation then?
Yeah, I think that's, that's important. And I think that you can live in one area and still know other areas. And get, grasp, you know, different cultures.
Anything else you want to tell us?
I think, vote for Nicholas Graham.
We've talked about a lot of things and then, and you've been very forthcoming. We appreciate you coming in. It was nice to meet you.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate it. Nice to meet y'all too. Thank you so much.
All right.